Stafford County Planning Commission Order, I'd ask all to rise for the invocation led by Mr. Cohen and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Gibbons.
Lord, we thank you for our many blessings.
And for all the good things that we have, family, friends. We also appreciate that we live in a system where we are allowed to have input into decisions, as well as a possibility to show respect and understanding to others. Thank you for, and keep watch over the members of our military, who are at home and overseas, as well as our police, fire, and rescue, and help us make good decisions for our community and our country. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Cohen, could you please call the roll?
Certainly. Mr. Appicella?
Here.
Ms. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Here.
Mr. English?
Here.
Mr. Gibbons?
Here.
Mr. Rhodes?
Here.
And myself. Sir, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Are there any declarations of disqualification for any item on the agenda this evening?
Yes, Mr. Gibbons. On item one and two, I did meet with the applicant.
Very good.
And we'll have a public meeting.
Thank you very much. Okay, certainly not a disqualification, but a clarification to ensure folks are, it's transparent that there's been some communication discourse. Any other items? Okay, we'll move on to public presentations. This is an opportunity for any member that's here this evening to speak on any item except for item number one. During item number one, during the public hearing item, there, oh, excuse me, that's being continued, so, on any item at all, you may speak on them at this time. So, sir, if you, when you come forward, if you'd state your name and your address, a green light will come on indicating that there's three minutes, a yellow light will come on when there's one minute, and then a red light will start blinking, and we're just asking you work to conclude your comments at that time. Sir.
Thank you, sir. My name is Chris Wemple. I live at 19 Fireberry Boulevard. I've been a Stafford County resident and an original owner at that address since 1999. I've lived there. I'm here to speak about the Winding Creek development, items two and three, and the proposed connection to Fireberry Boulevard. There are aspects of this development that are concerning to me and many other residents, and I am speaking specifically in opposition to the connection of Fireberry as part of this development. The proposed development would bring 97 single-family households into our midst. The reality of today is that both parents would be employed and therefore commuters. Winding Creek Road is not going to be their tribal option, because it would mean left turns onto a narrow, high-speed country road more suited for 1960s Stafford than today, and even more left turns to get anywhere towards any employment sites. The reality is that the significant majority of those trips would be through the Autumn Ridge subdivision, cutting through Fireberry to Live Oak to Eustis. There will be no less than 194 vehicular trips outbound in the morning and another 194 trips home in the evening, just from the residents. That's 388 trips per day, five days a week, 52 weeks a year, for a realistic traffic load of 100,880 vehicle trips, as a result of this subdivision, every single year. Even if, even if as little as two-thirds of the drivers in that neighborhood take Fireberry as a cut-through, it would mean 258 additional vehicle trips per day, or in the neighborhood of 67,000 vehicle trips per year through the Autumn Ridge subdivision. This does not include cut-through traffic that will ensue from other neighborhoods further away who are looking to circumvent Courthouse Road and reach I-95 Garrisonville, avoiding the new traffic backups caused by the hot lanes. In a meeting Monday night, the developer's representative made it clear that they were not willing to make any improvements to Winding Creek Road, other than to donate the land necessary for its future widening to modern standards. This development is proposed with no roadway improvements to the most affected roads. After hearing our concerns, however, the developer did offer to cul-de-sac their side of Fireberry Boulevard until such time as Winding Creek Road is upgraded to the standards necessary to make it the superior travel choice for the residents there, but advised that both planning and the county would have to waive their connection requirement. The planning commission members present informed us that Winding Creek is not on any near plans for improvement, save for the Courthouse Road intersection. Any future connection between the two halves of Fireberry would then be up to the county to complete. Speaking for myself and on behalf of several owners, we recommend that the commission adopt this offer regarding the dead end of Fireberry and waive the connection requirement with a provision that once Winding Creek Road is properly improved to modern standards from Walpole to Courthouse, Fireberry would then be reconsidered for its connection. I thank you for listening to my concerns, and I welcome any comments or questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, sir. During the public presentation, there's not really an opportunity for interactive dialogue, but it does give an opportunity to present, so thank you very much, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on any item this evening? Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name's Kelvin James. I reside at 49 Easter Drive in Stafford, and I'm also here to speak on behalf of two items on the agenda, as well as on behalf of my son, who's graduated Colonial Forge High School and couldn't make it this evening. First, I want to thank Mr. Robert Gibbons for attending the Neighborhood Informational Meeting on January 26 at the Hampton Oaks Community Center to give explanation behind the Stafford County Proposed Planning Commission project. This is RC 1400221 and CUP 1400222. As was previously mentioned, I am here in concern for the development that is to occur on Winding Creek Road, and in particular, the development that is being proposed. While I do greatly appreciate the work that the planning commission staff has done, it can't be easy. I'm also here to express concern and objection to the development, and in particular because Winding Creek Road in and of itself needs some improvement. Likewise, I support the cul-de-sac should that development proceed by planning commission vote, to help mitigate some of the traffic issues and concerns. Those are my two items there. On behalf of Austin James, Colonial Forge graduate, he is now 18 years old and finds that there's not much recreation here for students and youth inside during the winter, and so he has asked me to speak on his behalf if there was a way that the planning commission could find itself to influence others to provide recreation for youth inside during the winter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. So, anyone else would like to speak? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the, we'll move on from the public presentations. There's not a public hearing item, but I would ask, Mr. Harvey, have we received anything yet on some of the updated information? I know last time we met, there was a lot of changes that were going to be coming forward on the, on item number one, which we won't hear that till next.
Mr. Chairman, I've had discussion with the representative for the applicant, and they are working diligently on providing us with additional information. To date, nothing's been filed, nothing new's been filed with the county.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. So, we'll move on to unfinished business, item number two, I believe we're going. Yes, please, Mr. Gibbons. Sorry.
So, what I'm worried about the clock.
Yeah, on George Washington. So, we've got, the deadline associated with that is the 10th of March. We'll hear it again on the 11th of February, and then we will have the 25th of February. We'll have those two sessions to complete it, as it stands right now.
And the council's here tonight. You can't, you can't extend it a month or two?
Well, we can certainly raise it with them, or staff can raise it with them. I know it was discussed last time, but as it seems right now, it's, we have two sessions that we'll be able to hear. Any other indications, Mr. Harvey?
Mr. Chairman, that'd be something that the commission would need to direct to the applicant's representative, and the staff would need to get a copy of any correspondence in writing.
Okay. I guess what I'm worried about is the staff doesn't even have the information yet either. And so, how in the world, it's gonna...
Hopefully, it can come in as soon as it's available.
Either that, or we pass it on to the board with no action, tell them that they can handle it.
Yes, sir. Would you like to comment? You certainly may. The agenda item that doesn't exist.
I was just pretending I wasn't out there, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, other members of the planning commission, my name is Charlie Payne, Law from Herschel Flyer, and we do represent Augustine South Associates. We've made extensive progress. Everything is in draft form, being reviewed by the client, so hopefully, we will have it to the county staff by Friday or first thing Monday. That's what I'm pushing for. So, everything has been pretty much completed, just getting it through the client's final review, and then getting it submitted to staff. And I've indicated the same to Mr. Harvey, they want to make sure we get that in his hands and the staff's hands fairly quickly.
Okay.
And those items include, just so you know, revised GDP, a draft CDA agreement, and revised proffers, and a revised regulating plan. So, all that is pretty much done, so we should have it to staff fairly quickly. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. So, we have items number two and three, unfinished business, and I believe we'll present those together. Correct, Ms. Harvey?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. If you recognize Erica Ely for the staff update.
Very good. Yes, Mr. English.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to excuse myself on items two and three. They're not directly, I mean, they're related, but not indirectly related to me, and I feel like just to keep it up and board, I'd just like to excuse myself.
Thank you very much. Understood, so, you'll observe.
Yes, I'll observe.
Very good. Okay. Very good.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening.
Members of the planning commission, if I could have the computer, please. Just as a reminder, the applicant is requesting a reclassification from the A1 zoning district to the R1 zoning district, and a conditional use permit for a cluster with increased density in the R1 district, for property that is approximately 63 acres located at the intersection of Winding Creek and Embry Mill Road, within the Garrisonville and Rock Hill election districts. Property surrounded by single-family residential uses. The existing underground utility easement transects the southern portion of the property. Winding Creek Road transects the western portion of the property, and Austin Run transects the northern portion of the property from west to east. Public hearing was held on November 12, 2014, and the item was deferred to the meeting on January 14. At that meeting, the item was deferred for continued dialogue between commissioners and the surrounding residents. There was a meeting held on January 26, 2015. Staff provided additional information in the staff report, the staff report for the January 14 meeting, and also the staff report for this meeting, to address concerns raised by the public and the commission during the public hearing at, you know, November 12 meeting. So, in the presentation, I'll just summarize the issues. And the screen is a little... So, the issues that were brought up included a disclosure notice for property owners abiding the VECO easement, that there may be some above-ground power lines in the future, and the applicant has agreed to include disclosure notices will be provided in the proffer statement. There was a concern with the lack of parks and recreation proffers. We did receive a revised proffer statement this afternoon, which does add $150,000 in parks and rec proffers to the statement. The concern with the safety of Winding Creek Road has been brought up, and staff does recommend the upgrade of Winding Creek Road to a two-lane major local standard, which is called for in the conference of plan. The proffer statement, there was a concern about the proffer statement referencing 97 dwelling units when the reclassification would only permit 94. The conditional use permit is for three additional units. The, the 97 units can only be built with the approval of the conditional use permit, even though the statement is in the proffer statement. There was a concern with the lack of provision of recreational amenities on site, and the applicant has revised the GDP and the proffer statement to provide a top lot and a possible picnic pavilion area. And this is just showing you where that would be located on the GDP, as you have seen in your backup material. Additionally, there was concern with the possibility of a cemetery on the site, and the applicant did verify there's not a cemetery located on the subject property, and the commission did receive information to that effect in backup documentation. There is a concern expressed by residents of the Autumn Ridge subdivision regarding the restoration of the property currently impacted by the temporary cul-de-sac and the potential use of Fireberry Lane as a cut-through to Eustis Road, and staff has recommended the consideration and inclusion in the proffer statement of an alternative design for the interparcial connection utilizing a modified traffic circle or roundabout, because the interparcial connection is required by the county code. Fire and rescue did request that that interparcial connection be made at the time development occurs, and VDOT would require a waiver to not have to go through with that connection. There was...
Harvey?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry. Thank you. I apologize for interrupting. There was a good bit of discussion on the interparcial connector. Could you just clarify what that, what the process is with VDOT on not doing an interparcial connector?
Mr. Chairman, VDOT has a connectivity standard that it applies for all new development. In particular, residential neighborhoods of this type would be required to provide connection to adjacent properties and connect to other state roads. More than likely, this would meet the threshold for the required connection. They would have to go through an exception process with VDOT, and VDOT would review it to see if the connection could be prohibited or not made. My experience is that VDOT normally would not grant this type of an exception when an existing road is provided to the property line.
When was the last one that you can recall that there was a, an exception granted? I thought there was a topo.
It was regarding a, the one I most recently recall was regarding a sub, a cluster subdivision in agricultural zone, and there was some question about connecting two, two parts of the same piece of property. There was an intervening stream, and one side of the property had connection to an existing subdivision. However, they were breaking the subdivision into two pieces to minimize the connection across the stream. VDOT agreed that that connection across the stream was not reasonable in that particular case, and did not require the connectivity.
Topo land issues?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Could I ask?
It plays, Mr. Gibbons. Yep, because this was a lot of discussion.
And then, the circle, that, that would be acceptable to VDOT, same as we did it down in...
Mr. Gibbons, Ms. Ely did speak to Mr. Beal of VDOT, and I'll let her characterize the discussion.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Gibbons, Mr. Beal did talk with other engineers at VDOT this afternoon and verified that they would support the modified traffic circle or roundabout in that location if it was requested by the county in a condition or proffer.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, yes, please, Mr. Cohen.
Has there been any visualization of what that would look like and where? I mean, it's, it's an interesting concept, but I'm not quite sure if I was living in the other side or where it's going to connect. I don't know what envision, what you actually want to be doing.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Cohen, a modified traffic circle that, that we're talking about would be a two-legged roundabout with an island in the middle. VDOT also calls it a mini roundabout. It doesn't require a lot of additional right-of-way in order to complete, and staff would recommend that it be entirely built on the applicant's property, so that we would not affect those residents in Autumn Ridge.
So, just conceptually, if a person's coming from the new development, all they'd really have to do is just slow down, do a half, and then go straight, and likewise, because it's only a one-way. Thank you.
Just a flow impeder. Yep. Okay. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Chair. So, the issue, next issue after that was a question regarding, you know, how much buildable area there is on open space parcel E, which is the parcel of land the applicant is intending to dedicate to either the HOA or the county. It's approximately 10 dwelling units. There was a question about the impact to schools.
Erica, before you go there, I thought we talked about open space parcel E at our previous meeting, and at least some portion of it was not conducive to development. I could be wrong, but, I mean, this is 10 acres, so...
Mr. Chair, Mr. Appicella, there is an area, there's a wetlands on there, and, but when we're, we did, I think, we requested the applicant to submit the buildable area, and I think they said seven and a half acres was buildable. And of course, when we're doing that type of review, we're looking at everything the code would allow them to do outright, so it's not that staff would recommend 10 dwelling units be built there. We would probably, you know, we would look at the comprehensive plan, we would say we would want the environmentally sensitive areas avoided, and things like that. But if you're just looking at the acreage, it could yield approximately 10 dwelling units.
Thanks.
And regarding the impact to schools, the only school with a capacity issue is the Rodney Thompson Middle School, and the school division has said that these schools that are at capacity or almost at capacity will hopefully be mitigated by the 2019-2020 school year through the redistricting process that's undergoing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
The other night, the chairman of the school board said that their calculation of students and ours was off. It doesn't match. Remember she?
Oh, from, from this application?
Right.
Does anybody recall what the application indicates the impact to schools to be on this one? I meant to go back and look at the earlier package. I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, we can go back and look at the information and respond.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, if we could come, circle back, that just, there was a point of contention, so it'd be nice to just know what the... 126 students? Yes, what's in the application?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, in the past, our planning staff's estimate of schoolchildren has been higher than the observed countywide numbers that the school system had been using.
Okay. I think, and it may have just been a, I think, a comment about schools was at a much lower number, and so that was just probably a misstatement, because Ms. Kidby did indicate a higher number, similar to what is in the staff package, so it's probably just a misstatement there. Thank you. Yes, please, Mr. Cohen.
Does memory serve me correctly that those students would be going to Colonial Forge? Which if I, if memory serves me, is at 110% capacity now, and is slated even with an addition, to still be at 110%? So, that, I'm just surprised that it says the only one that would be impacted is Rodney Thompson, when the high school would be impacted, and there is no plan for redistricting in that either. So, isn't that, didn't I see in, in one of the reports, it said that they would be going to Forge?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Cohen, yes, that's correct, and this response was received from the school division, so the, the concern is the middle schools, I think.
The, the schools are only working redistricting for elementary and middle schools, they're not for high schools because of the expansions they're doing, and they're intent to ultimately find another high school, but right now, they're, they're not doing anything on the high schools.
Well, and the other statement she made the other night is that this is a new subdivision, and the figures that they had did not include this subdivision.
Not included in their plans. Yep. So, right now, Rodney Thompson's plans are current projections to be 27 over their limit by 2019, and their redistricting proposals, if they go with the, to reduce it between 135 and 195 aggregate, but that doesn't include something like this. Sorry.
Okay. Mr. Chair. And the next issue was the, there were comments made about the public notification process, and we just noted that notice is provided to all the adjoining property owners, and so this went because of the open space parcel to the HOA, instead of the individual property owners, and then they're notified however they are from their HOA.
Because we've interrupted you on every comment, I'll do it again. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I would just share with the planning commissioners that there was a strong consensus among, there was a good turnout on Monday night, but there's strong consensus among the owners there for the proposal that we were trying to push forward towards something along the lines of public meeting or some process in advance of the application formally being submitted. We may try and work that again with the, the board during the coming year, so...
Okay, and the next issue is, there was a request by staff that in order for the right-of-way dedications to be considered as an in-kind proffer, that without compensation should be noted in the proffer statement. The proffer statement has been revised to remove without compensation for the right-of-way dedications that are required, and remove the amount of an in-kind proffer from the Winding Creek right-of-way. And then, there was also a question about whether a sidewalk would be constructed along Winding Creek Road, and that was verified by the applicant that there would not be a sidewalk along Winding Creek Road. Additionally, the GDP was revised to respond to a concern by the property owner in Autumn Ridge subdivision about buffering. I can't read his parcel ID number, but it's at Lot 44. You can see the additional buffering there on the GDP responding to that. And in response to additional information requested by the planning commission, this table shows the residential development potential for each piece or section of the property on either side of Winding Creek Road, and also the entire site. So, the area of land dedication is 10.4 acres. By right, development is three dwelling units, and the reclassification would allow 15 dwelling units maximum, and the CUP would allow for 23 dwelling units. And then, the area east of Winding Creek Road, 52.73 acres, would allow 17 dwelling units by right, 79 dwelling units with the reclassification, and 118 dwelling units the CUP. And the entire site would yield 21 dwelling units by right, 94, with the reclassification, and 142 if the CUP was maxed out.
Just, just to be clear, those bottom two CUP numbers aren't yet taking into account the perennial streams, the CPRA, and any other peculiarities about the site that may not allow for that number to be reached?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Appicella, that's correct. This is a maximum dwelling unit potential for the site without considering any type of limiting features or topography or anything else. This is just the absolute maximum that could be generated. And we also received a request for the assessed value for the land dedications. The assessed value was determined from the Commissioner of the Revenue's records for the current value of the property. The 10.4-acre land dedication piece is valued at $102,782, and then the right-of-way for the Embry Mill Road, $7,764, and Winding Creek right-of, Road right-of-way is $8,361.
Mr. Chairman, before Erica goes on, with regard to the open space dedication, you may already speak to this further on in your brief, but what was the county, or at least the Parks Department's position on the land in terms of whether they thought it was viable or that the county should take it?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Appicella, the Parks and Recreation Director, excuse me, did comment that she didn't see the value to the county for that dedication for Parks and Recreation at this time. So, staff finds the following positive findings with the application. It's consistent with the established development pattern, meets the intent of the comprehensive plan, and the dedication of the right-of-way accommodates planned transportation improvements. And with regard to negative findings, the comprehensive plan identifies an upgrade to Winding Creek Road to an urban two-lane major local standard. There are also potential impacts to the intersection of Eustis Road, North Hampton Boulevard, and Hampton Park Road, which will continue to operate at a level of Service E, and to which trips generated from this development will add a few seconds of delay. It's a minimal delay, but the comprehensive plan does call for that to be addressed. And then, there's also the interparcial connection to Fireberry Boulevard. Staff's recommending the modified traffic circle or roundabout. Staff would note that these are transportation-related issues, and that during the review process, the per-unit transportation proffers have, have significantly increased per unit, although they still are under the proffer guidelines of $17,005 per unit. They have gone up from $2,062 per unit to $10,309. This slide shows a comparison between... This slide shows a comparison between the current guidelines and the proposed proffer statement amounts. And then also there are the recent reclassifications that the commission has seen.
Just to, I just, I apologize, I don't recall. The package we sent forward to the board for the modified proffer guidance, that came out to what, about 37 unit plus the transportation impact?
The, let's see.
Trying to remember what that one was.
Mr. Chairman, my recollection is it was something to that degree. And then that included a reduction that the commission had recommended.
Based on the calculations?
Yes.
Yeah, as a percentage. Okay. Just trying to get context. Thanks.
And this next slide hasn't been updated with Parks and Rec additional amount. But this gives an idea of the proffer amounts differing from new development units, which are 77 units and 20, approximately 20 by right units. And staff is recommending approval of the applications. Also, it's an application for reclassification and an application for a conditional use permit. And staff does recommend the following considerations. Provision of per-unit contributions closer to proffer guidelines overall, with the additional consideration especially to the proffer guidelines, recommendation of $17,005 for transportation facilities, considering the transportation issues, the surrounding network. And staff also does recommend considering modified traffic circle at the interparcial connection of Fireberry Boulevard. And just as an additional note, there is a condition for the CUP, which is similar to the Woodstock Lane condition that you did see a few meetings ago, with the option for 10-foot side yard setback or fire sprinklers because it's a cluster subdivision. The proffer statement does include proffer number eight, which states that fire sprinklers will be offered as an option, but that fire sprinklers shall not be required in this development. Staff does recommend that in order for those two to be in accordance with each other, if the commission is going to accept the proffer's, the proffer statement with the language that fire sprinklers will not be provided, that the condition be that the side yard setback be a minimum of 10 feet.
Okay. Where did, just, I apologize, I don't recall. Where did we end up on the Woodstock one? Did it work out to 10 feet? Or where did that one conclude? Did we end up writing that in?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, it's courthouse manner.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, courthouse manner is the minimum.
And we did include the 10-foot minimum?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just couldn't remember. Okay, thank you. Okay, questions for staff? Okay, thank you very much. Applicant, please.
Mr. Chairman, other members of the planning commission. My name is Charlie Payne Law from Herschel Fleischer. Please forgive me for my voice. I'm finding a little bit of a cold. Some people would wish that I couldn't talk. That was last Friday. That's not happening today. I'm sorry. Thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate staff's presentation. I would say there's a couple of new curveballs we haven't seen, both in regards to the fire sprinkler alternative and also to the roundabout connection with Fireberry Boulevard, which we haven't had a chance to analyze. Of course, both of those coming up tonight.
So can I end it from the, on the, the roundabout? I have it from your engineer that he contacted the county. Because when we were there Monday night, the neighbors brought it up. And he had done it during the day. So hopefully it didn't catch you blindsided, but.
Well, he recommended two options, neither of which was a roundabout.
And one was, was the other?
He, we're in agreement about eliminating the interparcial connection to Fireberry Boulevard and provide a permanent cul-de-sac on our property. But that would require a waiver from the county, which may very well be overruled by VDOT.
He was saying they agree with the cul-de-sacking and not connecting, but it would require a waiver from the county, which is correct.
Right. And this is the email that was sent out. Can you hear me, Mr. Givens? I'm sorry. This is the email that was sent out Tuesday, January 27th, 12:58 PM by Mr. King. Is that what you're referring to? We're happy to eliminate the interparcial connection and request the waiver. May very well impact lots. It may very well impact lots. We may lose some lots. But we'll, like I said, we haven't had a chance to look at it. So we'll take a look at it. If that's the alternative, it is on the table. It is what it is. We'd like to move this process forward. Does that make sense? But we are in agreement to eliminate the interparcial connection. That's correct.
And then the alternative, if VDOT doesn't agree with it, we can't get the waiver, would you default to the roundabout?
I mean, one of the tough things about, you know, being up here and trying to negotiate final proffers and move a, approve a project forward is when things are presented at the actual hearing for the first time and not to the applicant. It's a little frustrating. Sorry. So in order for me to evaluate whether or not I'm going to lose two or three lots, which could have an economic impact on the project, which we have put forward 300-plus new $1,000 in proffers, now you're asking me to take the risk of losing two more lots, maybe?
Yeah, but you're just a nice guy, Charlie.
I know I'm a nice guy, but I represent folks who are trying to stay alive, right? They're trying to make this economically feasible. And I assure you, I'm typically in the middle of it. So, Mr. Givens, you know how much I respect you and how much I want to appease that your constituents' concerns, which is why we're in agreement not to connect that interparcial connection.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's just important to also point out that our deadline for taking action is February 10th. And our next meeting date is February 11th.
Yeah, we have to act on time. That's correct.
We will, in good faith, take a look at it. If this does proceed forward, we will. One way or the other, I guess it will proceed forward. We will take a look at it. I will give you that. No, sir. Remember, I mean, we started this thing in November, so. And I think it was your deferral last time, Mr. Givens, if my memory serves me. Respectfully, in regards to the setback on the, on the fire department's comments, again, I had a chance to evaluate that, what the impact is. And certainly, this planning commission can act pursuant to its discretion on that. I will like to highlight a couple of things. And Erica covered most of our changes, I think. But this is hot off the press. You have it in front of you, I believe, was our most recent revised proffers. Of course, they're dated as of today. And just go through some of the cash proffers real quick, just so that I can just outline these. We did remove the credit for the dedication of the right-of-way under Section 4A along Wining Creek Road. And it will be dedicated without compensation. We did convert the recreational parkland to open space pursuant to the request of staff and of county leadership. We did also increase our cash contribution from 2.62 million to 2.939 million. That includes 1.6 for schools, 150,000 for park and rec, a million dollars for transportation, 57,519 for libraries, fire and rescue, 74,151, and general government, 40,964. If you take that into account on 97 units, that's over 30,304.71, which has been very much in line with other approved projects, if not slightly higher. If you take out the 20 by right units, it's at 38,176.06 just on cash. If you add our in-kind contribution calculations with the cash, you're looking at a total of 3.922 million and some change, which comes out to about 40,437 for 97 units. And for 77 units, over $50,000. I think there's been significant movement on our front to address many of the concerns raised by the planning commission. And in addition, as staff noted, there are other changes to the proffer statement that Erica went over. In regards to staff's conclusions on Wining Creek, I think it's, I think it's fair to say that Wining Creek is not programmed and that county's transportation construction plans at this point, a million dollars in proffers may very well help get that program for improvements. Our TIA did not require, or as I say, did not conclude that we would have any off-site improvements or require any off-site improvements. We are improving the entrance, obviously, at our site with a taper lane and also dedicating right-of-way on both sides and preserving 10.3 acres on the west side of Wining Creek so there will not be traffic coming from that side. And in regards to, to comments regarding the value of the open space site and our in-kind evaluation, of course, we're looking at fair market value, which is a little bit different than assessed value as the investor has to acquire property at the fair market price, not at the assessed price. We'd love to do that. That'd be a great, great opportunity for many people, I'm sure. And if it had to be condemned by the county to preserve it for recreational purposes or for open space preservation, I assure you, I haven't seen a condemnation case yet where the assessed value was the determining valuation at the conclusion of a case as that. So what you typically look at is highest and best use. So that's, that's what we evaluated for purposes of that dedication. I think I covered everything, Mr. Chairman. If I missed something, I'm happy to answer any questions. You may have.
Yes, please, Mr. Givens.
On the proffers now. For, under transportation, I go down to D. And what you're saying isn't, isn't in writing here. You said you were going to, you would support the.
We, well, we, this just came up as of, I guess, well, really tonight and as of yesterday. But we will, we can remove D completely from our proffer statement. You're correct. We need to revise that.
It sounds like we probably would want to do a little modification to D then, based on the conversation tonight, if that is the conclusion of all.
Correct, Mr. Chairman.
So we'll suspend until we get the wording done?
Yeah, so we've got, we had, we had two points that were raised between staff and other discussion. One was dealing with proffer number eight and the fire sprinkler residential unit. 10-foot minimums setback if not fire, if not sprinkled. And then there was the discussion on the interparcial connection, which I know there are a lot of people with a lot of different views. I think if you did something at 4D, it would probably have to be, would agree to a cul-de-sac, you know, I think it was a cul-de-sac until such sound that Wining Creek is approved, subject to county and VDOT approvals, because they, you don't know that you're going to get the waiver. So I think the wording would probably be something like that. And then the other discussion up here, and if the waiver's not received, then would be whether or not you have some language around the consideration of the, of the.
Roundabout.
Two-legged roundabout, yeah. Other comments or questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, there's at least a procedural issue, I think, under B that's been mentioned by staff. It doesn't seem to have been rectified. And maybe counsel can speak to it. So again, staff has indicated that at least in terms of the proffer statement, it should say 94 units, not 97. It's the CUP that gains them the additional, that gets approved, the additional three units. I don't know what the right fix is, but it sounds, it's been repeated several times. I think it needs to be looked at.
And just to confirm, Ms. McClendon, your thought on that? Should that be 94 there?
Mr. Chairman, this is the first time I'm hearing about this issue, so I'm not prepared to opine on it.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify.
Yes, please, Mr. Harvey.
Staff perspective, the 97 should include the reference to the CUP.
Okay, so just reference CUP. 97 subject to CUP approval or?
Correct.
Okay, so that, it sounds like a half a sentence added in there.
The last sentence provides, the proffers provided herein apply only to the cluster development and applicable density shown on the GDP. I think that was a language staff asked us to put, to insert under B.
Okay, we've got a couple of sentences to, potentially, there are sentences to add. One way or another, there's either a no-go or a delay on this. So maybe Ms. McClendon could just, we'll look at that last sentence. So that's what you believe was addressing that disconnect. Okay. Okay, so we'll try and make sure where everybody's comfortable with that. So that was in 1B. Other questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you very much. What, if I, so back at the planning commission for a minute. I'm not, I'm not hearing strong objections. I'm hearing suggestions on modifications to try and accommodate a few issues here. And those are just confirmation that everybody's comfortable that 1B addresses what we wanted to address. Questions on what might, modifications that would be necessary on 4 Delta and then possible modifications associated with A. Were there any other items or do we, yes, please, Mr.?
And just, this is probably from Mr. Harvey and staff. I guess it's a logistical question, which I think I know the answer, but it's always nice to ask questions. Make sure you do. So if we put in here that there's a cul-de-sac, basically depending upon granting a waiver from and/or, you know, approval from VDOT in the county for this roundabout. And as Mr. Harvey said earlier, the trend is that VDOT will not approve said roundabout, then.
No, not approve said.
Right, but I mean.
Interparcial connector.
Right. They want an interconnector connector, and roundabouts may or may not work. So then what are the residents stuck with? I mean, are the residents stuck with going back to just a straight cut-through? I have strong problems with the roundabout. But I necessarily like to know what's the fallback. If VDOT says no to absolutely no cut-through, and then the applicant says, I don't want to lose the units on a roundabout.
The indication is that VDOT will not approve a waiver and will require the interparcial connector. And the preliminary indication was that they would be receptive towards the small circle roundabout as a traffic hindrance or.
Right, but if the applicant is saying that it may be prohibitive to the applicant, and the applicant comes back and says nay, then that's my question is.
And you have the interparcial connector.
Normal.
Just have the interparcial connector.
Right, so in effect, we would be, even if we put in these changes, the great possibility is, is that the residents would be facing the status quo.
Interparcial connector or roundabout, yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
But that could be the, we're recommending to the board. And when he goes before the board in public hearing, it can be ironed out there. But our recommendation forward is he make the request like he said he would and that the roundabout would be the default. And that's what we're recommending. That's what we recommend to the board. And then if he can't do it, it's cost prohibitive. When he goes before the board with his comments, then the board can take it out or leave it that way. Because they're the one that has to make the application.
Ms. Harvey?
Mr. Chairman, I was going to ask for the computer, please.
Computer, please?
Just to have a picture to go with the discussion. This is a general development plan, and this is the area that's being discussed. Assuming that a connection is required, there would be a.
They actually can see it. We just can't see it, so it's okay.
So assuming the connection would be required without a roundabout or some other mechanism, then this would be what would be constructed. Basically, an extension of the street into Fireberry Boulevard. As you can see from this layout, there's not a direct connection out to Wining Creek Road. It requires a number of turns, which is typically what staff recommends for interparcial connections with neighborhoods, try to minimize the cut-through traffic. Again, that was another thought about the logic behind the idea of a traffic circle if it was permitted or desirable. And that, one, it would again further deter traffic from trying to use it as a cut-through. And also, two, it would help delineate the difference between the two neighborhoods. I understand the applicant's concern about the proximity of these few lots in relation to. to this area here because of the depth of this lot due to the corner of this property. So it wouldn't be a perfect situation where the circle would be here without impacting the number of lots.
Okay. Okay, I think there was, you all came up with that just after you were exploring, after you heard the questions about putting in a permanent cul-de-sac until you could do Winding Creek expansion, and with your experience on what likely was gonna be VDOT's reaction, trying to find other alternatives. That's, did you all come up with that one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that was a staff recommendation. I was conferring with Ms. Ely, and that was something that was provided in staff comments a few meetings ago to the applicant. But knowing that there are some design issues that have to go through VDOT, I don't think it gathered that much importance until more recently.
So as an alternative, okay. All right. So my sense from the discussion here is that it seems to be there's, with the increased proffers and the other discussion and trying to address this particularly 4D, that there's some inclination to possibly set this aside for just a minute, let the applicant work on a little bit of modified language that we could vote to accept or not, and then dispose of this, this application possibly, or not. Does that sound right? Mr. Payne, you're gonna work on those couple little sections?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you, okay, that's what I was assuming. So we will set this aside for a minute and move on to item number four. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just gonna give the commission an update. Our last meeting, Ms. Blackburn provided the commission with a series of cluster ordinances from different localities.
Who's gonna work with the language, wouldn't?
Well, he'll present it back up, we'll look at it and...
Well, you know, I think staff should be reviewing it.
Oh, yeah, it'll, it'll have to go to Ms. McLendon first and staff. Agreed. They'll look at it and think if we got her or not.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, again, Ms. Blackburn discussed a little bit about the various ordinances that we've collected from throughout the Commonwealth on cluster regulations. There were some desire from the commission for us to take a look at Dinwiddie County and Goosecliff County, because they had some performance standards in their ordinance, and we're continuing to do that and work on it. One thing we observed in further discussions with representatives from Dinwiddie County is that their ordinance is set up as a overlay district, and their performance standards apply when there's an increase in density. So for a byright application, we would not be able to utilize those types of performance standards, but we could potentially do it in the context of our current R1 zone, where we have a possibility of a density bonus. Again, staff's gonna continue to work on that and report back at a future meeting.
Do you have any projected timeline?
Not at this point.
Okay, very good, that's fair. Okay, then we'll, so how'd we look from down there, Mr. English? Pretty impressive? Yeah, okay, sure. Okay. Item number five, starting to the Liberty Knolls block length waiver? I don't think this will, we've discussed this a good bit when the last application came through, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, please recognize Erica Ely for the discussion.
Maybe she can get through a presentation.
Without us interrupting? Yeah, we'll see.
This one should be quick. Okay. Just as a quick review, at the meeting on October 22nd, 2014, this request for a waiver of section 22-156 of the subdivision ordinance block length was considered concurrently with a reclassification application for the proposed Liberty Knolls II subdivision. Planning Commission deferred the vote for the waiver until the reclassification would be approved, because the waiver was not required in the A1 zoning district but is required in the R2 zoning district. The reclassification was approved by the Board of Supervisors at the meeting on January 20th, 2015. As a quick review, the subject parcel is, tax parcel 29-17, it's approximately 30 acres and is located on the north side of Courthouse Road, approximately 1,100 feet east of Winding Creek Road in the Garrisonville Election District. The original submission of the GDP showed a substantial impact to wetlands and critical resource protection area by the internal road network, including three cul-de-sacs, and encroachment by structures and yard area. Staff recommended that the applicant consider an alternative design in order to avoid environmentally sensitive areas consistent with the comprehensive plan. This is the revised GDP.
Computer, please.
I'm sorry. I thought I asked for the computer. So that's the, here's the aerial of the site. There's the original GDP, and here's the revised GDP showing the extended block length and avoidance of that RPA wetland area. And staff recommends approval of the waiver for section 22-156. The impacts to the wetland area is reduced by the location of the road as proposed. The GDP balances a density that is supported by the comprehensive plan on a property with significant natural resource area, and the avoidance of environmentally sensitive areas is supported by the comprehensive plan, and the waiver will not have an adverse effect upon the future residents adjoining property.
Questions of staff? Yes, please, Mr. English.
Ms. Ely, I think, I just want to clarify, VDOT would not, would not let them close that road off until something was done with Courthouse Road, correct? In other words...
That was on the other application.
Yes.
Yeah, this is the same, this is the two, right.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. English, yes, VDOT would not support temporarily closing that road, and I'm sorry, I forget the name of the road, but yes, the access point to Courthouse Road from the internal subdivision road.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay, applicant, please? Is, I don't know that there's much to this, but... Interrupting your train of thought there, Mr. Payne.
He's working very hard on your proffer statement, Mr. Chairman. Charlie Payne with the Law Firm Herschel Fleyer, and we represent the applicant. I think staff has covered all the issues, and as you all may recall, this was deferred until the Board of Supervisors weighed in on the application, and they did, and they voted 5-2 in approval. So if I can answer any questions for...
Questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second your motion.
This is Garrisonville. Handing my gavel down, Mr. Appicello.
Did you get it?
I, I've taken possession of the gavel momentarily only. Mr. Chairman, this is in your district.
Thank you.
What's your preference?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the waiver of the subdivision ordinance for section 22-156.
Okay, there's a motion to approve that's also been seconded. Any further comment, Mr. Rhodes?
Just submit, I think we did this in the proffer order, as staff had recommended. Typically, we don't like to do these long block lengths, but this has a very logical reason, getting around that sensitive area, so it makes perfect sense, and it is what the staff recommended, so.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Gibbons? No comment, Mr. Gibbons? Anyone else? Ms. Cohen?
Just for, when this first came up, I had a concern about the extended length of the road, the block, and so I reiterate a concern about that. I also agree with the comments by Mr. Milde and Mr. Thomas last week at the board meeting, where they had reservations about this. In particular, Mr. Milde was raising the question that we're doing this for open space, and yet there's no guarantee that the HOA in five, 10, 15 years from now is just gonna turn around and try to do something else with it. And had it been put into an easement or something, it would've been guaranteed. I know of an HOA that had an area that was designated as open space, and then they really wanted to pave it over and put in basketball and tennis courts and whatnot. And the only thing that could stop it is something else, other than, you know, the HOA could do what they want. So I may well vote in favor of this, and the idea that we're, at least for a time period, protecting the environmental aspect of this, but it still troubles me, and I still have a concern, as Mr. Milde and Mr. Thomas pointed out last week.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? I do have some similar concerns, as raised by Mr. Cohen, Mr. Milde, and Mr. Thomas. And my biggest concern is this is kind of a deviation from, from practice in the past, that we're doing this as part of a rezoning. And I hope we're not going down a slippery slope here, but nonetheless, I'll ask for the motion to proceed forward. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, pass at 7-0. Mr. Chairman, I'm passing the gavel back to you.
Thank you very much. I think the ComPlan UDA update will take a minute, and so we'll set item seven, so we'll let staff confer, we'll just stand in place for a few minutes.
Well, on the urban development, you would wish to set up a committee. We could discuss that, because I'd like to volunteer for that.
Okay, yeah, in fact, my anticipation of the presentation that we're going to receive is gonna indicate that we've got a lot of work to do in just a couple months, and I think we will, rather than doing this committee, the whole, might be better served if we have a committee. Thank you for volunteering, Mr. Gibbons. Mr. Cohen had already volunteered. If there were a third member that would like to participate.
Okay.
You're looking arm wrestling.
Go ahead.
You can defer, okay. So, Mr. Cohen, Mr. Gibbons, and Ms. Bailey, thank you very much.
And I think seeing the airport committee work good and come back in with an outstanding product.
Yep.
Works.
No, it did, so we're expecting the same from you. That'd be great, so it's good to know. Thank you all very much, because I know that...
You won't have no fear that would miss Bailey on the committee.
I do appreciate you taking that on, because I know that's in addition to all the other things you're doing, so I appreciate it. I think that would be most effective use of the staff's time, as well as all involved, to be able to move this forward. There is some pretty, as we'll see in the presentation, there is some pretty specific guidance that has come back, so that'll, I think, help move it along, but still, there's gonna need to be some shaping of that.
There'll be some notice when you're having these meetings, in case one of us wants to sit in, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. Great. Okay, we stalled the best we could, Mr. Harvey. How we going?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we're on track.
Okay, yeah, if we're, I think we're ready. Back to items two and three. So just to confirm, so Ms. McLendon, you've seen this at least to...
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
We'll decide if we all are comfortable with the construct, but you're comfortable with it from the county's legal perspective?
That's correct. And Mr. Payne will be addressing that for you.
Okay, Mr. Payne?
Mr. Chairman and other members of the Planning Commission, Charlie Payne with the Law Firm Herschel Fleyer, and represent the applicant, and thank you, staff and Rashida, for working with us on this modified language. I will first address, excuse me, 1B, and speaking to the county attorney, we've agreed that the language should change as follows. The last sentence will read, "The proffers provided herein apply only to the cluster development plan and applicable density shown on the GDP and subject to the CUP approval." I should say conditional use permit approval.
Any questions left from anyone? Very good, then we had 4 Delta.
4 Delta, if you could bear with me on the language here, Mr. Chairman, it's quite, quite lengthy. Don't get, I guess I get paid by the letter, so forgive me, but I wanted to make sure I included everything.
Word is a better word.
Letter's more profitable, Mr. Gibbons. The applicant agrees not to provide an interpartial connection to Fireberry Boulevard, comma, but will show a permanent cul-de-sac on applicant's property as shown on the GDP and subject to the county and VDOT, and subject to county and VDOT approval, period. Notwithstanding the foregoing, and in the event VDOT rejects the waiver request, the applicant agrees to review the possibility of constructing a modified two-legged roundabout on applicant's property in the area shown on the GDP, period. Covers one, our agreement not to build the interpartial connection, and the county would have to request a waiver from VDOT. If that's rejected, we will then look at the modified roundabout as part of our final plans.
Okay.
Which is consistent with what I said we...
Comments and questions on that?
Mr. Chairman, I gotta be honest, it was a little hard to follow.
Okay, could you, could you restate it, please? Thank you.
This is 4D again, Mr. Chair.
4 Delta, please.
The applicant agrees not to provide an interpartial connection to Fireberry Boulevard, comma, but will show a permanent cul-de-sac on applicant's property, all as shown on the GDP, and subject to county and VDOT approval, period. Notwithstanding the foregoing, and in the event VDOT rejects the waiver request, the applicant agrees to review the possibility of constructing a modified two-legged roundabout on applicant's property in the area shown on the GDP, period.
So the key thing there is it's not committing to the roundabout, however, it has been introduced at, I would suggest it's also been introduced late, and there's time to change that as the board hears it or challenges it. We can all highlight to our supervisor what has transpired here, if we're willing to consider this.
So, Mr. Chairman, is it therefore clear that if the county slash VDOT does not approve the waiver, and the applicant does not foresee, or does not determine that the roundabout is economically viable, then it will, it will default back to an interpartial connection?
Is there any question with that in this? Because they have to do an interpartial connector short of a waiver, correct?
There's no...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and at this point in time, we don't have engineering to determine what the real impacts of that type of design would be.
The roundabout.
Correct.
Yeah, no, understood.
And we promised to look at it between now and the Board of Supervisors here.
And, and we all know what has transpired here, and it's incumbent on us to also raise to our supervisor what the intent was in there, to ensure that there's been some opportunity to look at that, I think.
And, Mr. Chairman, the next, the next component, you know, we have included in section eight of our proffer statement regarding sprinklers, and that we would offer sprinklers to buyers of all units, and versus the requirement that we include sprinklers in all units that's in the conditional use permit or agreed to the 10-foot setback. Problem with the 10, problem with prior one is, you're talking about a lot of extra expense for sprinklers in every unit, and I don't know a house in, development, I should say, in Stafford where all the units have sprinklers in them. And then the second part about the setback is, these are 50-foot lots. We would lose a lot of lots if we had to have, if we agreed to the 10-foot setback, so we can't agree to it. But what we can agree to is obviously offering the sprinklers, which has been the language in many other rezoning proffers that has come forward, and this is not a special use permit like Courthouse Manor, but this is, I'm sorry, it is a conditional use permit, I'm sorry, because we do have a conditional use permit tied to this on the cluster. But for the rezoning part, we cannot agree to that.
So, Mr. Chairman, from a staff perspective, we would want to have the CUP conditions harmonized with the proffers, because right now they're potentially in conflict.
And again, what are the CUP conditions?
Ms. Ely has the specific language.
Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, the CUP conditions were included in the November 12 staff report information. There are three conditions, and the first one is, the approval of this conditional use permit allows for a cluster subdivision in the R1 zoning district, which shall be limited to 97 single-family dwelling units. So that one's just your standard language. The final condition, also a standard language, which just states that the conditional use permit may be revoked or conditions amended by the board for violation of any of the conditions. And the only substantial condition that wasn't included is residential fire sprinklers shall be provided within each residential unit, or each side yard setback shall be 10 feet. And that has been the condition all along.
Okay. And please remind, Mr. Harvey, the requirement for the 10 feet comes from where, or Ms. Ely?
Mr. Chair, the, that's a request of the fire rescue, and I do believe that the justification was included in your backup documentation, but it was also included in the Courthouse Manor. It's the same documentation that, with the reduction of, with an increase in density with the clusters and the reduction of the lot size and the close proximity of the houses to each other, that adds a safety concern for fire and rescue.
Okay, thank you.
And, Mr. Harvey, correct me, but just to be clear, I mean, we initially harmonized, if you will, the conditional use permit, excuse me, conditions with the proffers in one document. I think the difference is now is the fire sprinkler component, which, which staff is recommending at this point. Is that the...
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Payne, I believe probably in your initial submission, you had proposed that they be harmonized, and apparently what I'm reading, seeing now is that our staff report included the two... report included the two components, which is not consistent with the proffers. So it would still need to be clarified and resolved at this point in time.
Those CUP that were just read, those are from the November presentation?
Yes, sir.
Right? Okay.
Because we have a whole miscellaneous section in the proffer statement that was supposed to reflect, correct?
Yes. The initial conditions included quite a few conditions, and they were revised, and all the conditions were incorporated into proffer statement, except for the one condition for the 10-yard side setback.
And the difference, and just for clarity, Mr. Chairman, so the difference is, that recommendation for either sprinklers in every unit or 10-foot setback is inconsistent with section eight of our current draft proffer statement. That's the difference. And as we stated, different than Courthouse Manor, where those lots were 54 feet or 52 feet wide, there was more flexibility, I believe, for them to agree to that. This would, this would have an adverse impact on the lots, the number of lots that we would be able to develop with 50-foot lots that are proposed in this project. That's correct. I'm sorry, 50, I'm sorry, the house is 50 foot. I'm sorry.
It makes that roundabout a good deal, Charlie.
I feel, I feel like, I feel like, I'm all casad.
So, okay, so where we stand right now are, there are eight-foot setbacks, right? Is that what we're got right now? Five?
Ten on one and eight on one.
We're meeting, we're meeting the county code requirement. Eighteen of total, total is 18 feet.
Okay.
Nine, it's either nine or nine or 10, eight, one or two. That's how it works.
Can staff respond to that?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the minimum setback in a cluster is eight, and as they indicated, the combined both side yards have to be total 18. So that could be nine and nine, or eight and 10.
Okay.
The minimum is eight.
And what this is, what fire rescue's suggesting is that it be 20 total.
10 and 10, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Well, they have, they have presented some modified proffers. They have not modified eight, which would mean you would then, if we accepted that, we would then be accepting, modifying the CUP, right? To join there. Thoughts? Reactions?
Whatever we come up with, Mr. Chairman, I think we've got to strive towards some consistency. And I don't know what that consistency should be, but on one project that we resumed, we went with the, with the wider setbacks, but I, again, by the same token, I appreciate that the current requirements are less than that. So somehow, we need to address it one way or the other.
Might need to modify the county code or something, yeah. You have to make them consistent. It's hard to have one out as a-
But the gain in density from the CUP versus the, is quite a substantial increase, the number of units.
Yeah.
So if he doesn't have the CUP, then it's, what, 90?
94.
94. And would the CUP gets?
97.
So there's three difference between the two, right?
Correct. Correct.
So I guess the question is, is it worth the CUP for three units?
Okay, so we need to, we would need to vote to accept the new information that's received tonight, if we were going to act on it. And that would also depend on whether or not we're willing to accept the paragraph eight as it is, or not. So that would include in the decision there. I kind of think we ought to be, as much as possible, clear and open and transparent with external folks, and that's what our code says, and that's the 18 feet. I appreciate very much what fire rescue says, but it's kind of hard to do something different than what the code says. I don't know where we missed that in the Courthouse Manor one, but that strikes me a little bit. I don't know what other thoughts are. What's that? Yeah, I think they just accepted it, and we've, yeah.
This time, I think we do.
Yeah. But I'm kind of struck a little bit by the fact, if we've got something out there that people plan to, and then we modify, that's kind of hard. I don't know, what are other thoughts? Please, Mr. Cohen.
Well, and just a couple of things. One, I often am supporting our fire and rescue to fire people, and have done so, and I think I've barraged poor Mr. Harvey with loads of questions about how do we up the standards of the fire. People say, "It should be X," and we don't have it quite at X, so-
That's the code, yeah.
Yeah. And so I've been pretty consistent that I really think that that's a concern. I also think, I would be remiss if I didn't pay attention to the news reports about how new constructions of homes with open floor plans and et cetera change is how fires and whatnot happen. And I, and I'm not saying that these are going to be castles, but I do think that all the reports have been that the newer constructions, the way people want these homes to be open floor plans and whatnot, help the spreading of fires faster. So I lean towards that we should go, we, I remember the conversation about the Manor, and the idea was, you know, we should set a precedent that with closer units, it is for safety's sake, and I would, I'm going to go lean for safety's sake.
Fair. Okay.
Yeah, having worked on the cluster subdivision ordinance change, I think, you know, one of the, now, looking in hindsight, we may have been remiss that we didn't run it by the fire and rescue department to see what, if any issues or concerns that they had. So I don't know that we contemplated this as a potential problem. You know, on the one hand, we wanted to provide flexibility and incentivize cluster development, but I don't think in setting that 18-feet setback combo that we knew that this was going to wind up being an issue. Now I think we do.
Yeah. So actually, what's before us is to accept the new information so we can act on the application one way or another, positively or negatively. And the new information that has been presented is with paragraph eight as it is, that, but before we could act on the application, we first need to decide if we want to accept the overall new information, which is the increased proffers to close to 3 million, et cetera, all the other strike-in, strike-out changes. So, I guess I can, that's all, this is all Garrisonville? Or it's split, right? We're split. You got a little bit, you got a little wedge over on the side. Rock hill. I'll hand the gavel over. So I might as well get this moving. I guess, this is not really about a district, so I guess we need to entertain a motion to accept the new- Oh, I'll make the motion. Okay. Motion for Mr. Gibbons.
I'll say it.
Second by Mr. Boswell. Further comment, Mr. Gibbons?
Sure.
Mr. Boswell? Other members? This is in order to act on the information that we received. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? So now we do have the modified proffers that we can act on, they have been included and incorporated with the modifications there. Now I'd like to hand the gavel over.
Mr. Chairman, I think we need to modify the CUP conditions, then.
We will when we get to, we'll have to when we get to that one. Do we act on this one first, or should we modify those now?
You should act on the reclassification first.
Yeah, I think the reason for that would be, if we decided not to recommend approval, then we wouldn't necessarily have to change the CUP, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is in your district. Do you have a motion to put forward?
Yes, I do. I'd like to make a motion to, and I'll discuss it, but I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval to the board of supervisors of RC 1400-221, reclassification Wind Creek, with the modified proffers as were received tonight.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to approve this reclassification, and it's been properly seconded. Any discussion, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Rhodes?
Yes, please, thank you. I just wanted to share that, a couple of thoughts behind this, for what it's, for what it's worth. If I were, if this, I don't care, if any application's going to bring something with an interparcial connector, I, as a person living there, I'm probably going to oppose it. But from a planning construct, I actually support the interparcial connectors, I just want to be out and open with that. We've got the modified proffers that are going to pursue putting in the cul-de-sac and see if we can get the waiver and so forth, but I just want to highlight that I actually support the interparcial connectors. They are, they're important to fire rescue, they're important to emergency services, they're important to snowplows, they're important to effective use of the school buses for the schools, to ensure the safest transport of our students on the, on the buses by making things connected and not having a bunch of little islands. So there's, that's why VDOT tends to very rarely waive them. So I'm not necessarily opposed from the planning construct. I know if I were, if it were my street, I'd be the first one to be up there trying to fight it. So I understand and appreciate people's view on that. The other dynamic that I have here that causes me to recommend approval is, if you go back to the buy right, we get, there's nothing there. This is bringing about $1 million in from a transportation perspective, it's bringing 1.7 million in for the schools, it's bringing 150 parks and records, et cetera, it's just short of 3 million. Would you like more? You'd always like more, but this is bringing resources in that can assist on some important areas for the county. And lastly, the reason is, our next major enhancement to our infrastructure for transportation is Courthouse Road in about the next four years. I know there's a lot of, the question is, is it exactly, is it going to be four, is it going to be three, is it going to be five? But that's our next major thing we're focused on. It goes up through Ramah Church. It's actually going to fix that horrible Wind Creek Courthouse intersection, and so we need to be leveraging that as we look at the 20-year plans and all the homes that are coming. And I think from that perspective, this tends to do that. And for those reasons, I'm going to, that's why I made the motion that I did, I will be highlighting to my supervisor the dynamic on the roundabout, just for, to make sure there's awareness on the dynamics there, but that's the reason I'm supporting this forward. I do think we ought to consider and discuss changes to the setback. If we believe it ought to be 20 feet, then we ought to change the ordinance to say it's 20 feet, if that's the right thing. And I don't disagree with fire rescue, but I think we just ought to do it for deliberate and open, transparent planning purposes. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Rhodes, Ms. Gibbons, any comments?
The chairman and I only disagree on one minor issue, and we have a great difference in this, but I don't believe in interparcial connectors in all subdivisions. I'm from the old school that says a neighborhood is a neighborhood, and I, sometimes I don't like to share my neighborhood with everybody in the United States. So there's major roads you can travel, and that's VDOT's responsibility, but we respectfully disagree.
Disagree.
But I back the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbons. Any other comments? Mr. Cohen?
Yes, I'm going to, I may well be alone in this, surprise, but I'm going to be voting against this for numerous reasons. One, I have a great concern about the impact this is going to have on Wind Creek. While we hope that VDOT is going to do something about Courthouse in the next five, whatever years, there is no guarantee of when we're going to address Wind Creek. And as far as the quality of life for the people in school buses and other entities that are going up and down that road, I have a concern about that. I understand the difference between doing a buy right and jumping up, but a buy right at 20 homes versus redoing this to 97 homes is a large difference. And I'm not quite certain that the proffers sufficiently mitigate the impact of the development on our county. Yes, we're getting up towards 3 million, but I don't really think that the cost it is going to make to us is going to be the same. I have grave concerns about the cut-through aspect, the interparcial connector. I really don't envision that it's going to be feasible for the applicant to put in a roundabout. I have strong concerns, maybe it's just because I go to Spox Mall too often, but I have really strong concerns about roundabouts. And I really can envision, and I don't really fault the applicant for this, because it's coming at them in this manner, but to do the roundabout, they eliminate X number of homes, so it probably won't be feasible. So then the residents are right back to where we were back in November, which is, there's going to be a cut-through, and it will be a cut-through. People are going to zip through there, because that's human nature. And so I just have a concern about the general welfare for the people in the county, particularly the people in both subdivisions. And so I just really don't believe that this is in the best interest of the county, and I cannot support it.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Any other comments? I'll just say that I appreciate the comments of both Mr. Rhodes and Mr. Gibbons, as well as Mr. Cohen. I think your comments before, Mr. Rhodes, were well-taken and apropos. I appreciate your concerns, Mr. Cohen, in particular, the cut-through. I think that's beyond the control of the applicant, and that's a VDOT requirement, so there's not really much they can do about it, whether it makes sense or not. It is what is required in this case. I also appreciate the applicant made many positive changes in regards to concerns that we raised along the way, and in particular, the additional modifications they made today. I think it makes it a much better package, and the proffers, I think, are that much more reasonable going forward. So for those reasons, I'm going to support it as well. So, all those in favor of the reclassification of Wind Creek with the modified proper, proffers, RC 1400-221, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the motion passes six to one.
Five.
Five to one.
I'm sorry. That's right, five to one. Darrell?
Now we got one more.
Now, in regards to the CUP.
Yep. I would just suggest that we need to make a modification to the one CUP to be consistent with this one, so that it's, the language of eight would become the condition. Is that, is that, I think it's what I understood staff to be suggesting, we should have consistency.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. To avoid conflicts between the two.
So I would just, Mr. Fisch, I'd just be, suggest that we modify the CUP to reflect the language of, the CUP associated with the fire sprinklers and the 10-foot, and/or the 10-foot setback, be modified to be consistent with paragraph eight of the proffer?
Is that a motion, Mr. Rhodes?
Yes, yes, sir.
Sir, second? Okay, there's been a motion, properly seconded, to modify the CUP conditions.
That's conditional, and if that's how, staff would modify it.
Any concerns or reservations, staff?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Rhodes, we would, again, recommend that the CUP condition be consistent with the proffer.
So that would, I think that would do it then, okay.
Okay, so trying to reinterpret that, what I hear is that we're going to make the condition consistent with the proffer that's already been approved as part of the reclassification approval. Is that your understanding, Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons? Okay, Mr. Rhodes, any comments?
No, I would just, I'm going to make a motion to recommend approval of CUP 1400-222, the conditional use permit for Wind Creek with the modified proffers as discussed, or modified conditions as discussed.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table to approve the CUP with the modified conditions as stated, and it's been properly seconded. Any comments, Mr. Rhodes?
Nothing further, sir.
Mr. Gibbons? Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the motion passes five to one.
Okay, very good. Thank you all very much, and as Mr. English comes back up, we are moving on to item number six. So that action will now go to the board of supervisors, and they'll advertise it for public hearing, and it'll go through the process again. So we're now to item number six, the comprehensive plan amendment, urban development areas. Mr. Harvey?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Zaraf will lead the discussion on this matter.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This item is further consideration of comprehensive plan amendment for modifying urban development areas as they currently exist in the comp plan. At the January 20th Board of Supervisors' annual planning meeting, the board discussed the issue. The intention was to get additional direction for the Planning Commission regarding the effort. Staff presented background information and posed several questions to the board- Staff presented background information and posed several questions to the board to kind of assist in their consideration. And in so, in considering the conditions, the board is providing specific direction then, which in the memo I provided you, all the specific points of direction that they are providing to you. Yes, I'll go through that briefly. First was the desire to eliminate the UDA terminology throughout the plan and use some other terminology, whether it's TGA or something else. That was something that had been recommended before and they just reinforced that desire. Second point, there is a desire to retain the UDA as a targeted growth area. I think the additional consideration there was, they're open to some type of intensity, a development intensity that would be less than the full UDA density. But they would still like that as some sort of targeted area. They did recommend elimination of the Eskimo Hill UDA and that had been recommended by the Planning Commission before. This would lead to the redistribution of those units to other targeted growth areas. And then in the targeted growth areas, as far as how much future growth they should be received in those areas, the board did, does want the, that current ratio of 50% of all future growth to be consistent. So currently 50% of all future planned growth over the next 20 years is recommended in UDAs. They'd like that ratio to continue in the TGAs as that moves forward. So, in doing so, in the removal of the Eskimo Hill UDA, we're going to have to put more lots in these fewer TGAs. Also, the maximum density for multifamily units, there should be no more than 14 dwelling units per acre as currently recommended in the comp plan under UDAs. The previous recommendation from the Planning Commission had suggested up to 20 dwelling units per acre in some of the UDAs and the board wishes that to not be that high. And then also, I guess the question of other adjustments or new TGAs, the board does, said there should be no new TGAs added. And also then the next point, point seven, that there should be no more boundary change adjustments except for any recommendations that might come out of the results of the airport compatibility study. And that's no more changes from what was provided to the board back in June. There were some slight modifications to Courthouse UDA and the Southern Gateway UDA. There were no problems with that. But as far as going into new areas and the other areas and making other changes, there's no desire for that. Point eight, there is desire then also for staff to go into some of the details and see how we can provide the fewest number of townhouse and multifamily units in the TGAs in relation to the land area. So if we can still fit the same amount of growth in these areas as under single-family detached units, then that's the desire there. Staff does note that since the rate of growth needs to be maintained and we do need to redistribute other units, that the ability to reduce the number of townhouse and multifamily units might not be that great, but we're going to go through and see what we can do with that. So we're going to go through, evaluate site constraints and run through some scenarios on the staff level and see how we can redistribute the numbers and mix of units. Also, in, what question we had was, well, would there be appetite to allowing for multifamily or townhouse units in the suburban land use district to help absorb some of that growth? And there is no desire for additional multifamily or townhouse units to be allowed in the suburban areas at this time. And then from that, we did raise that we're up upon the five-year update and that is required by state law. And so the board did agree that this effort could serve as, as providing that five-year update through refreshing the comp plan with updated build-out data and projections but no new substantive changes beyond the UDA-TGA changes. And there's a desire to have the work completed and back to them by June. Don't take any questions.
So if they, let's round up on their behalf. If it's by June means their first session in June, I think that's like the second or third, it's one of the first days in June, correct?
Pretty early.
So if we're having it to them, we would have to vote out any final, whatever we're sending to them by the second session in May, which means we're going to have to do a public hearing on this. Just kind of work it through. So if we give ourselves an extra work session to work it, that's the first session in May. If that's when we did the public hearing, even that, you probably needed to advertise the first session in April. So we're really talking February, March to get some product developed and go forward. Does that sound about right to commissioners or to staff perspective?
Yes.
Okay. Questions for Mike? I just wanted to get the horizon in mind. I know some folks have volunteered to help us move this along, but are there other questions for Mike at this point? Please, Mr. Cohen.
And I know, I asked Mr. Harvey this, but I just, I'm not sure if it has to officially go through you to get an answer. I know in one of the, watching one of the board meetings, that they had a concern about the shifting of the RDAs. And I remembered rather clearly why we shifted it. But then I didn't, and I think I saw it in some of the background material that was sent to them. But I wasn't sure if in the item that says no boundary, number seven, but boundary changes, for Mr. Harvey, they didn't actually address RDAs. But we might want to just feel them out and see if that was their scope. You know, or they were just talking about the general boundary. So that was just something that occurred to me because they had a question and I don't know that it came up because given all the other items, I don't think it was the most glaring. But it would be an inconsistency if we had done it and then we send it to them and they said, well, I told you no changes and we didn't interpret it. So I think clarification, that would be helpful.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, yeah, just confirming what you heard, that, yeah, the board did not address that. So that's up to the commission if they want to get the further clarification.
Other questions to staff or comments to staff on what we got here? I do know, I would note with much thanks and gratitude from all the commissioners and half the county that Mr. Cohen, Mr. Gibbons and Ms. Bailey have volunteered to serve as a subcommittee to work on this with staff over the next couple of months to try and incorporate all the direction from the board, identify any other areas that need to be highlighted, ensure inclusion of all the appropriate technical changes and other items consistent with the, was it item number seven or eight or nine from the five-year perspective, just to make sure we've got those things incorporated and in order to come back with something that hopefully we might be able to vote for a public hearing by the first session in April. So thank you all very much for taking on that additional work. Appreciate that. Is there anything else we need to address on this, Mr. Zaraf and Mr. Harvey?
No, sir, unless the commission has questions or...
I guess my question would be, when would this subcommittee try to have its first meeting? Again, you reference and I agree, it's on a short bell. So I'm not sure, it should necessarily wait until our next PC meeting.
I think they'll get together and work with staff and see how soon they can get together.
I guess, not to be pushy, but Mike, do you have a timeframe of certain materials that you think, so that's where we're going for, we can sort of have an idea, this is what staff thinks is doable on this? I mean, some of the items are pretty straightforward, they're already done. So now, just maybe it's me, but I just think it's a question of massaging where those numbers are going to be to a large part. And then the airport one, which is up to us as a body to move on. But that's sort of the, so if, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, you know I do that.
That's, I mean, we'll adjust accordingly. I mean, there are tasks that are minor and some that are, take a little more time. So if the committee wants to meet sooner, we may be ready to kind of, we can go through some of the quick things and definitely address that. But if we need another meeting for the major kind of scenario work that we've got to work through, then maybe we can do it that way, so we can keep making progress.
So I guess my question would be, which would be the best way to facilitate this for us to meet and then come to you or for you to sort of bullet point items and get, send them out to us so then we can turn around and meet based on what you're saying?
I would suggest maybe just scheduling a meeting is, you know, whenever you guys are ready and we've got all the points and then we can go through them and try to, you know, when we have a meeting set and staff can, you know, work on providing maybe things that can be addressed right away and then at the meeting or in advance let you know what we're not going to be ready for.
Okay, and then, I'm sure our legal will let me know, but since there's three of us, then technically there's a certain requirement of timeframe, correct?
Yes, Mr. Cohen, there needs to be at least 72 hours' notice for a public meeting.
Mr. Chairman, and one more point, just to reemphasize that the scope and charter of the subcommittee is not just to work on the UDA changes, UDA slash TGA changes, but also the, I'll call it the comp plan refresh.
Very good. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number seven, new business, Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Regional Airport Compatibility Land Use Plan. The work of our other subcommittee.
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. There'll be a discussion being led by both Mr. Zaraf and Ms. Ely.
Thank you.
If we can have the computer, please.
And our guests who were willing to be here for us appreciate that new business comes at the end of the agenda. So thank you all very much.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, myself and Erica are here to present to you the Stafford Regional Airport Compatible Land Use Plan. That was a work of a subcommittee over this past year. Okay, so what really the commission has to consider is adoption of the airport compatible land use guidelines around the regional airport as an element of the comprehensive plan. As the document has been provided to you, it's identified as a potential section 3.6 of the Land Use Plan Chapter of the Comp Plan. That's how it's kind of been formatted, but that can be adjusted if so desired. Just looking back at the timeline of this work, this started back April 2nd of 2014. There was an initial meeting at that time between the Planning Commission and Stafford Regional Airport Authority that was to discuss the concerns with conflicting land uses at the time. And at the, as a result of that meeting, a subcommittee was formed to develop these guidelines. The subcommittee thereafter, from June to October, met six different times at the Stafford, at the regional airport to work on the guidelines. And on November 6th, the committee did hold an open house when the guidelines were presented. And the public comment period was open through November 20th. After November 20th, on December 18th, the subcommittee held its final meeting to finalize the draft document, incorporate any changes resulting from the open house and other comments provided to staff and the committee. So looking at the, and reviewing the plan itself, it's broken up into different sections and we'll go through each of these sections in a moment. There's an introduction, background of the airport, area of impact or the areas that are subject to this plan, the zoning land use analysis and land use compatibility guidelines themselves. So first, looking at the introduction section. This kind of covers the basis for this document. It refers to some of the basic existing policies. There's policy 4.9.1 in the comp plan, which does state the county should develop land use compatibility standards for new development to conform to within the aircraft approach patterns of airports and landing strips. And just in general, also good planning practice would be to minimize conflicts between conflicting uses. And so that's what, there is a potential for that in this situation. And we do know that growth potential is high around the Stafford Regional Airport. So there's definitely benefits in doing this. Now looking at the background section on the airport and the plan. This is a section that reviews kind of the history of the airport. The, does go over the existing conditions and operations of the airport. Looks, discussion of the future plans. The image here is out of the airport's master plan, highlighting how they plan to grow in the future. And a brief discussion on the economic impact that the airport does provide to the county. Next section goes over the areas of impact, the areas that would apply under this, these guidelines. This map highlights the areas that would apply. This area, it's basically the airport impact zones. These airport impact zones closely correspond to the county's Airport Impact Overlay Zoning District, which is currently in place in the zoning ordinance. Some of the zones have been divided into finer detail, in sub-areas, which I'll discuss in the next slide. So the airport zones, there are approach zones, those are the blue shaded zones. And those areas are, you have AP1, which is identified as the area closest to the ends of each end of the runway. Then you have an approach mid-area identified as AP2. That extends from that, the end of AP1, out 14,000 feet to the southeast and 10,000 feet to the northwest. And then AP3 is the outer approach and that is running off of the screen to the lower right-hand side. That extends out 50,000 feet from the runway, actually out into King George County. And then to the side of the approach area, you have an approach transitional area. Along each side of the runway, the T-zone in green, that's the transitional zone. And then you have a horizontal zone, which is kind of the circular area around the runway. That during the effort, under the overlay ordinance, that's just identified as one H-zone. But through the work of the subcommittee and discussions, there was a desire to kind of break that up because it is such a large area, there's different impacts. The H1 area is kind of the, where there's straight stretches for small and large aircraft to run along each side of the airport if the airplane is circling. Then there's the H2 zone, which is kind of the outer edge of that pattern, where it was identified that that area might be as less of a concern. The H3 zone area, where's the, that's the turning area within the horizontal zone, which was identified as maybe an area where there'd be a little bit more concern with what uses might be going in those areas. And then the outer conical area is the kind of outer buffer around the... then the outer conical area is the kind of outer buffer around the horizontal areas. Part of the document, we do provide an analysis of, of the zoning and land use in this area.
Stop talking, please.
And in doing so, this, the document includes the zoning and land uses in these areas. The analysis section helps to determine the type of potential development that might occur in, by comparing the zoning districts to the future land uses in each of the, of the overlay zones. Several of the areas do show kind of land use consistent with current zoning. For example, the, the outer approach areas in AP3, the, those, those areas are primarily all A1 zoning. And, and then the corresponding future land use is agriculture and rural. So those all kind of match up. But then, when you look, bring, this does identify areas where there is potential for changing land use. These two charts and graphs highlight the H1 zone. And this identifies that there, that a zone that might be impacted by future development. The table does show, under zoning on the top, that the majority of the zoning in this area is zoned A1. Second amount is M1. But then, when you look at the corresponding future land use acreage in that same area, the biggest, the largest land use area is urban development area, and second most, business and industry. So there's potential for change from that A1 zoning over to zoning that supports urban development area.
Mike, the H1, that starts a little under, somewhere, is that about a mile, the outer boundaries of H1? Is that about a mile from the center of the runway?
It would be almost two miles. It goes out, the outer edge of the H-zone is, is 10,000 feet.
10,000 feet.
That's the, the full outer edge of H2 and H3.
Left and right of the runway.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
So then the, the next section of the plan, should we turn it over to Erica, would, would be the section that does include the, the compatibility guidelines.
Good evening again. So the next section is the, the guidelines that were established. Their, the way, the form they appear in the document is through the goal, objective, and policies, which staff did complete research, looking at nationwide standards in adopted documents from various states, and also national document. There was a study that was FAA-supported. And so I just have the list there on the slide. And then the policies from those, that research created development standards and a review process. So the, the land use compatibility matrix, which is table one in your backup documentation, which is the table kind of identifying what's compatible and incompatible, and then what would require additional review. It's a tool to help identify compatibility between use and functional activities related to the airport. Particular uses may be compatible or have incompatible elements with an airport when located in a particular zone, which might just describe the different zones. The level of incompatibility is related primarily to safety, but also to the viability of the airport and surrounding development. So here is the table, which you've all seen. So this is just showing the institutional and residential uses called out there. Goes on to commercial, industrial, recreational, open space, and agricultural. And so what I did was I took a, well, actually, the, I'll just go back really quick, sorry. So you can see the red is the non-compatible use, and the zones are across the top. The green is for compatible. And then you'll see an AR, which is additional review, which means that these uses can be compatible in these zones with additional review, which would provide standards that can mitigate the incompatibility. And additional review standards in the document are concerned with externalities. And that's usually with industrial uses such as smoke and glare and population concentrations, usable amount, amount of usable open space, minimum distance from the runway for certain residential development, height limitations, management of vegetation and wildlife, navigation easements, and disclosure notices, and noise mitigation measures. So an example of a lot of the reclassifications that we see are to develop a residential subdivision, which is a request for additional density. The table one shows that that would be compatible in the AP-T and the C zones, not compatible in the AP1, AP2, T, and H3 zones, and additional review in AP3, H1, and H2. And I have a map there. So basically where the red is, is where a reclassification for increased density for residential subdivision would not be And then the additional review is required in AP3, AP3, H1, and H2, which I'll go back to the map, sorry for going back and forth, but just so you can see where, and the AP3 is to the south towards King George County. So that's not really shown here. And then the H1 and H2. So when we would receive a reclassification for single-family, small lot, that's usually what we're seeing, quarter acre lot, residential development, in the AP zone, the standard would encourage clustering with usable open space, minimum requirement of 50% open space, and the notification statement on all plans of development and marketing literature that it's in close proximity to airport operations and things like that. In the H1, H2, residential uses are prohibited within 3,000 feet of the center line of the runway. Areas of a proposal located within routine overflight zones should meet the usable open space requirement and site open space requirements. Development should be clustered outside of the overflight zone areas. And this would also require the real estate disclosure notice and a notification on all plans, and encourage noise mitigation measures. So when we would receive a reclassification in the H1, H2 zones, those would be the things that we would be applying as for mitigation measures. We would want to see that in a proper statement or something like that. That's what these standards would lead to. And then, just as an example of a commercial site, outright, they are compatible in AP3, AP-T, H2, and C zones, not compatible in AP1 zones. Those are just the zones right at the end of the runway. Additional review in AP2, T, H1, and H3 zones. So the only place where the commercial development is outright, outrightly incompatible, sorry, is the AP1 at the end of the runway. And additional review for general retail and service uses include population concentration limits for the site and for single acre. There's thresholds later on in the document. Larger shopping centers should provide the usable open space, and parking lot lighting should not be linear in design to avoid confusion with runway lighting. And the population thresholds are something that was identified in the California Airport Land Use Planning Handbook. And there are, they have established threshold numbers, which are, just going to read how they determine that. The site would, site-wide average intensity is calculating the total number of people expected to be on a site at any given time under normal, normal conditions divided by the total number of acres of the project site. The single acre intensity is calculated by determining the total number of people expected within any one acre portion at one time. So that would be, you know, wherever you would have the building, or you would have a higher concentration in a certain area for a certain reason. You can determine the number of people per use. It can be determined by parking calculations, or it can be determined by building code, occupational load. There's all various ways. We use parking calculations because that's something that's pretty standard in the code. And that's something that if we go forward, we can certainly discuss what the best way to calculate, or if, if you want to keep the population threshold in, in the document. So we have an example of two applications we've seen recently. So for McWhort loop, there's, it's, the size is 2.92 acres for the site, and the use is the retail, fast food, coffee shop. It's a little over 10,000 square feet. And the parking requirements for that is 41 spaces. And so that yields, you take, when you use parking space calculations, it's 1.5 people per parking space. That's the standard that we saw in the literature. So it's 62 people site-wide, 22 people per acre. And then if you go back, so it exceeds the AP2 site-wide average. So if you go to the threshold table, the AP2 site-wide average is 40 to 60 people per acre.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, that example is not located within any of the zones, but we use that as sort of a mental cue for the planning commission because you're familiar with that project?
Yeah, sorry. These are just, yeah, examples. And then we would pretend they're in the area, just to kind of get an idea of what we'd be looking at. And so then we did North Stafford Office Complex also. And so the other element of this is you have the population threshold, and you also have the usable open space. And the usable open space in the document is basically 300 feet by 75 feet is, and usable open space is required as a safety measure in case a plane needs an open area to land or crash. So in certain zones, you want to have that. And that's, that's basically a half an acre of open space. So that would also be a consideration for certain development in certain zones. And that is...
Comments or questions for staff or many, many of our guests?
Hi. Big surprise. Just a quick question, and I don't expect you to know the answer right off the top of your head, but I, one of my other hats is to serve on the CIP committee, so it'd be sensible to ask. And my eyesight really is getting bad with all the different colors. So if you could at some point just shoot me an email about, or answer now, where the Cliff Farm property is in those zones, because I couldn't, I could tell some streets, but I wasn't quite certain. And then if we were to use the average, the state, site-wide average intensity, population threshold, how would that apply to other types of either recreational schools or whatever? Because I didn't, I see there's recreational open space. But the Cliff Farm, I think, is under one of those zones, and I just was curious. Thank you.
Yes, if, as far as...
Computer, please?
Yes, if you have the computer, please. The Cliff Farm, the school site, okay, that would actually be...
A little outside the approach.
It is down in this conical area next to AP2. If you go down lower, Jeff, lower, over to that, no, over then to the, to the left.
Route 1 is red.
Yeah. A little bit more, there, right there. Yes, yes. So it's in the conical zone. And as far as population thresholds, that would, let's see. There are no specific thresholds for the conical. Yeah, there are, there are not population thresholds for the conical because it's the outer, outer edge.
Mr. Apicella, Mr. English? It's giving yours work or your guests?
I mean, I don't have any questions. I would just say a couple things. Number one, it's a lot to take in. It's a lot of material. As noted in the staff report, we had six meetings on this. And I'd say we started with a big package of information. I kind of weaned it down. We asked a lot of what-if questions and ran through a bunch of scenarios. The real devil in the details is in the table, and the additional review guidelines, as well as in the population thresholds. And again, we spent a lot of time asking ourselves, did it make sense? You know, what kind of adjustments did we need to make? In many cases, not many cases, but in some cases, we changed what was recommended because in reality, it needed to be tweaked. So a lot of time and effort went into this. A lot of research was conducted. Again, I think it's, it's a good model. It's a good package. It's a good set of criteria in terms of additional review, because we wanted to make sure that, that both the public and the development community, as well as officials, knew, you know, what on its face would be compatible, what on its face would be not compatible, and what might be potentially compatible based on additional review in these different pockets around the airport. And I think, I think we achieved that goal. You know, some may agree, disagree with what should be, you know, compatible versus not compatible, or what should require additional review. But at least we provided some context, and again, some specific criteria to balance specific proposals that might come before the county to see if, how they marry up with the different criteria that's in place.
Very good.
And I, yeah, this document, I think, was long overdue. I think a lot of residents needed that, and the community needed it in that district. And I'm hoping that they're going to, we're going to keep that population threshold document in. I think that's a good, it's another good tool for, for when doing that. And my hats go off the staff. They're the ones that did, I'd say, 95% of the workforce. And then, of course, the airport, their input too. I don't know if they had anything to say, but they were a major help.
You've been here the whole time. You're more than welcome to come up and comment if you'd like to.
You should.
You patiently sat there in those very comfortable chairs.
Hamilton Palmer, and I'm vice chair of the Airport Authority. And we did work with Mr. English, Mr. Apicella, and Lindy Kirkland, also with the Airport Authority, and Ed Wallace, our director. And I can't say enough about staff and what Stafford County has provided, the technical expertise, or the resource to go along and bring us the information, and so that we could put this packet together and bring to you. And I think it's, it's comprehensive. I think that it provides objective criteria for anybody that is going to develop or planning on developing around the airport. We strive to, to be objective with this and, and use existing technical criteria. So that's what you're seeing in the document. But my hat's off to everybody who worked on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So what are the next steps?
Mr. Chairman, this is a proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan. There's two routes in which this can travel. One could be that the commission, assuming that the information in the proposed amendment is satisfactory, could authorize a public hearing. Or two, if the commission is satisfied with the information and would like to get some feedback from the Board of Supervisors prior to conducting a public hearing, send it forward for their review and a referral.
Okay, I'm strongly inclined towards number two, but...
Mr. Chairman, again, it's a lot to, to take in, although, again, I think it's a very good product. And I think it would, would help us and it would help the public ultimately, if we ran this by the board and got their review and, and direction before we proceeded forward, because they may have a different, different view of the world. And it would be, would be good for everybody to know what their viewpoints are and what kind of direction they want to give back to us going forward.
So two paths there. One is we keep it, look at it... One is, we keep it, look at it, maybe do something else to it, I'm not necessarily suggesting that, and then send it to the board. Or two, we go ahead and develop a communication and send it to the board now. Where are our folks on this?
I would like to send it onto the board and get their input.
Do people need some more time to digest and think through it?
I like that. Excellent work by the staff and the subcommittee. Also, when we send it to the board for their feedback, we might want to just remind them that this would be part of what they want back in June, and so that, you know, that's why we'd like their feedback before a public hearing, is to get it so that we can, when we have a hearing, it's really moving forward in a good way. I guess this is, if I can ask a question to the other mic. And this is just a conceptual question, because I know from asking way too many questions, this plan is based on the 1,000-foot extension to the runway. If in the future, at some point, somebody's desire is to try to improve the current airport so they can handle other types of planes, other type of whatevers, at that point in time, I mean, this is made for the status quo ante, so therefore, if 20, 30, 40 years from now, they'll be looking at the fact that we've made a zone with, you know, thresholds based on this, when at some point, and then that future board would have to try to change the language and change the zones and change all that at that point in time.
Definitely, yeah. If there was a desire to make any changes, or, you know, extend the runway further or anything else, then there would likely be wise to further modify the comp plan, to modify the zones, and the county would likely also need to modify the overlay district to address whatever changes.
And just from, again, a conceptual, this is, because the comp plan is sort of this blueprint for the future, and it may be you or Erica's mindset, is there enough flexibility in what's been proposed that we're not setting up a situation where we've said, okay, these types of homes are compatible in this, and then 30, 40 years from now, if something changes, we've just set us up for a problem? Or is there enough flexibility to address that, or to do that? Again, I'm not expecting you to, you know, be a soothsayer and predict in the future, but you just sort of want to set it up that we're not here 20 years from now, or 15 years from now, saying, well, why didn't you think of that?
Well, I think the way the matrix was set up, we did keep the uses, we tried to keep it general, because the different examples we've looked to, there were some states that had guidance that was very specific on every different type of use, and I think the desire of the committee was to kind of keep this general for, you know, example of residential. We kept it general to large lot residential, single-family detached under an acre, townhouses and multifamily, and not get into too much detail as to all different, trying to guess all different kinds of unit types.
So, Mr. Harvey, or Mr. Apicella, Mr. English, do you all envision a certain communication going with this to the board, or just have staff present it up on behalf of the planning commission to gather their comment, or did anybody have a thought?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a recommendation that the committee brief the board. They have work sessions.
I'm happy to participate, but I'll tell you flat out, the staff are the experts here, and they did the yeoman's work on it, and I'm not going to say we were bystanders, but again, I think it was a collaborative effort, and I can't replace the knowledge and experience of staff right under the table.
I am Kentucky educated, and I am absolutely sure, I still don't understand what half of that stuff said, but I'm trying, it's going to take me while I get there. Ms. Harvey, thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, certainly if the commission so desires to send us forward to the board, the staff will work with the administrator's office to try to schedule us on a future meeting with the board. I'm not certain if it would start at a committee and work its way up, or go directly to the board, but that would yet to be determined. Certainly, we'd reflect the commission's overall desires with regard to moving forward.
There's one other thing I would add. It wasn't necessarily part of our charter or portfolio, but I understand that the Board of Supervisors were briefed on the research park, on the strategic plan for the research park, and I think one or more board members suggested that a similar effort be undertaken for the airport. So, I'm not saying that we would do it, I think they had a consultant do it for them, but I think in concert with this effort, with the modifications to the comp plan, the desire for more business and industry in Stafford County, and in particular around the airport, I think it would behoove the county to kind of create a vision and a plan going forward on how to best maximize this asset that, for the moment, I think, and everyone would agree, it's not completely and fully utilized, which I think the desire is there, but we're not there yet, and I think it's going to take some steps to do it. So, I think perhaps, I hope my fellow commissioners would endorse the notion that the county, in concert with the suggestion made by a couple of board members, should consider moving forward with a strategic plan for the airport and its environs.
From the perspective of the airport compatible land use plan, so is it, I'm hearing a developing consensus to possibly have a motion to recommend that it be brought forward, staff bring it forward to the board, acknowledging the planning commission's willingness to meet with them at any time to help understand, discuss, and work it forward with the intent of getting their feedback on it so that we could go forward on a public hearing?
I would just say the committee, not just the planning commission reps, but again, there's certain questions that I certainly lack the expertise on, that I think the airport...
I was just referring to, Mr. Apicella would take it himself.
I second that.
Yes, in fairness, yes. But just acknowledging that certainly, not just handing it off, but we're more than willing to come forward and discuss with the board, or interact with them in any way for them to understand, but with the intent and desire of getting it back as soon as possible with their feedback so that we can take it forward to a public hearing. Does that... You have a motion? Yes, please. Motion, Mr. English, to move this forward to the board with said communication and desire to move it forward.
I'll second that.
Second, Mr. Apicella. Further comment, Mr. English?
No, sir.
Further comment, Mr. Apicella?
Again, I just would ask that we not lose sight of another thought that I had about the county moving forward with a strategic plan sooner rather than later on the airport as well, in concert with everything else that's going on and that we've been tasked to do.
True.
If it helps, yes.
So, there's an amendment that in the communication as staff brings us forward, they also acknowledge the planning commission's observation of the need and desire for an overall strategic plan for the airport, and that this could be a part of it.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, is that...
We made up all kinds of stuff, Eric.
Is that an economic development strategic plan for the airport? Because I know that the airport itself has its own master plan.
I would leave it open-ended, I don't want to frame it beyond that, I think the...
You think this could be part of a larger plan, larger strategic plan associated with the airport? And we'd like to assist in any way possible to see when to go forward. But particularly, we'd like some feedback on this so we can move this one forward. Okay, thank you. Okay, any other comment? Yes, Mr. Gibbons, please.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think the public really realizes the significant importance of what has been done. We've acted for 20, 25 years, and within six or seven months, everybody brought it forward, and we are where we are today thanks to the heroic effort of a few dedicated souls.
It's going to be exciting to take it to public hearing when we can get there. Yep, you're here. Okay, all those in favor of the motion to move this forward to the board for feedback with some other commentary, signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? None? Pass the 7-0. Thank you all very much. Thanks for joining us. And we'll move on to the planning director's report. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a reminder, we have the annual report from last year.
Right, were there any comments or feedback from anybody? I do know, I will acknowledge it, and I would ask, if folks would allow me, I would like to add a paragraph at the end, which I have failed to do, but before we send it, I'd like to add a paragraph at the end, just to formally, from the planning commission perspective, acknowledge the great work of our staff, and if you'll give me the leeway, I'll add that in there. Okay. Were there any other edits or comments to it from the review?
Yeah, Mr. Harvey.
Yes, please, Ms. Bailey.
Mr. Harvey, I also completed the certified planning commission course.
Thank you.
We'll get that? Great. Anyone else? Okay, all in favor of the annual report as written with the one amendment and the flexibility to add a paragraph at the end, signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Thank you very much for doing that great work, Mr. Harvey, and I'll get you that last bit of information, and you'll make the edit, Ms. Bailey Reese. Anything else with Harvey?
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. County attorney's report.
I have no report at this time, Mr. [inaudible].
Thank you very much. What could ARB need? Any other committee reports? There will be one soon. Okay, very good. Awesome.
I got one item, Mr. Chairman.
Please, please, other business.
I gave you and Jeff a copy of the proposed build on Richmond.
Oh, yeah.
Changing of zoning, and they were supposed to be meeting today, and I can't find out what the progress was. But it changes the whole way we zone.
There was a, basically, preliminary approval would come from staff until such time that we actually got to see it on the planning commission. I mean, it's just a bizarre slogan.
Yeah, well, there's supposed to be a hearing today on it.
Yeah. Hear anything on that, Jeff?
No, sir, I haven't connected with any other staff members that may be...
Preliminary, assumed approved until the planning commission can see it and decide whether or not, I mean, it was just really weird. Okay, we'll look out for some feedback on that one.
Well, okay. Jeff, what I would do in the morning, you might want to get a, have somebody get ahold of the delegate code and have them give an update on it. That's the most significant change I've seen in that code in many a year.
It was crazy.
Then the other item, sir, is that when we're getting into the comp plan change, I think it's time that we get some newer technology, and I've seen, I've been on the, this is a long time, and we're so paper-oriented that we can't interact with technology. Now, there's new smart boards, there are touchscreens, the new Surface Tablet, where five or six people can get up and change things and do. And I think we ought to start asking the board to look into that as we go through the comp plan, that it's, the more automated we can make it for the residents and the industry, the better off we'd be.
So, I would think that we would ask staff to explore some options, but certainly, Mr. Gibbons, you touched all this stuff, if you have some suggestions too, and we could see where we can incorporate. I can't operate any of that stuff, but, I mean, you're much smarter than I am on that.
Right. That's why we disagree on the neighborhood.
Yeah, that's right. I would like to, actually, I think we need to get the technician out here. It used to be that after I got my every-other-week haircut, I had no white hair, and now I'm seeing on this thing here, it's there even after the haircut, and something wrong with the screen. Yeah, I think it's the lighting, we need to turn on lighting. Chairman's report, I would apologize, Mr. Cohen, I'm not sure if I ever responded. You had an email with a suggestion of the planning commission formally thanking the school board for their responsive actions on the George Washington Village. I mean, they turned very fast to get some feedback to us, and I think that was a great suggestion, and we'll work to work with staff to try and do some type of a communication back to the school board, thanking them for that partnership and that effort. I didn't really have anything else from a chairman's report perspective. Would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes, November 12, 2014 minutes? I think Mr. Gibbons was like half-second ahead of you, and you can second it, Mr. English. Is there any other comment, Mr. Gibbons? Mr. English, any other member? All those in favor of the motion to recommend approval of the November 12, 2014 minutes, signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Very good. Also, entertain a motion for approval of December 10, 2014, Joint School Board and Planning Commission minutes? Mr. English beat you? Okay, good, Mr. Gibbons, second. Further comment, Mr. English?
Cohen second.
I mean, who did I give the motion to? I gave it to everybody. Okay, yeah. Motion by Mr. English, second by Mr. Cohen. Any further comment, Mr. Cohen or Mr. English? Anybody?
Thank you for the compliment.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain, I wasn't here.
Very good. All those in favor of the motion to recommend approval of the minutes for December 12, Joint School Board and Planning Commission meeting, signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Not opposed? 6-0-1 is the score. You get one point, we all get two. Very good. Any other things we've missed? Mr. Harvey?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Cohen?
Well, also in the email, there were a couple other things that I didn't know if either the commission wanted to think about, dwell about, ask about, besides the item about the school board. One was to sort of take, there's been a lot of discussion at the end of last year about retail, and how box stores are dying, and that the whole nature of retail is shifting. I know a senior citizen who is exceedingly adept at using her Kindle and did most of her Christmas shopping on that. And so if the nature of retail is shifting, as we go forward, that may be something that we need to be aware of and think about. So I didn't know if we wanted to check with economic development and get their take of that aspect. Because as we're looking at items that are coming in with all sorts of, basically, brick and mortar stores, as a large component of it and a major attribute of it, if that's not the way the country's going, because people are going and buying things online, then maybe we need to be cognizant of that and start rethinking how we look at development. So that was one thing, and that's just a question that I don't know if we can just ask economic development for.
Would you like to, if you could, Mr. Harvey, just probe them, see if they have some views that maybe they might want to share back?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll contact them. We also have been reading that there's changes in the industry with regard to square footage of office space. They're also finding that the square foot per person for office space nationally is decreasing.
Yes.
Okay, very good.
And then the other thing that I raised, and I know staff did a great job tonight with it, but, and I'm not sure if it's a new element, but we keep seeing as part of proffers as an offset, if they are giving us parcel land for right-of-ways or for, you know, parks and recs or whatever, and we saw it a bit tonight where the question is, the assessed value versus the, you know, their best practices value, and I just think it'd be helpful for us, and I think staff has already worked on this, to come up with a matrix that we understand and it's pretty transparent of, this is what they're saying, this is what our assessment is, or whatever.
Well, isn't that at the board level now, Jeff? They never did give it back to us, have they?
Mr. Chairman and Mr. Gibbons, the proffer guidelines have been reworked by a Board of Supervisors Finance Audit and Budget Committee. It is to come back up at a future Board of Supervisors date for consideration of another public hearing, so it's not been adopted yet.
But part of that recommendation is the process of assessing.
Also, right.
Correct. The draft guidelines speak to how to determine the value of proffered land or construction. In the case of proffered land, it would be based on an appraisal provided by the applicant, and it'd be reviewed by the Commissioner of Revenues Office for determining whether it followed normal appraisal practices and/or use of the assessed value from the Commissioner or Revenues Office. Either one of those two mechanisms for determining the value of land.
And my point is, I think it would be helpful for everybody, granted it's still up on there, but I think it's helpful as we go forward to sort of understand the differences. I think staff did a great job tonight with saying, this is what the assessed value is better. And I think that just helps, I think the chair kept using the word transparency, I think that just helps with transparency.
And I think, just to clarify, I think part of your point was just ensuring that in the staff reports, we make sure to acknowledge where, what the bases and numbers, whose points and numbers are.
And then, and again, I'm not trying to, I think staff does a terrific job, but often, in the last several months, a project has come up and different members have asked about a number, and the answer's been, well, that was developed by the applicant. And I just think it's helpful for everybody, especially if anybody goes online and gathers this material and sees it, they understand.
Make sure his numbers understand.
Right. I mean, maybe it's by day job of citing your sources, but I just sort of think it's good to cite where the information's coming from, because then that makes a difference as far as how it's perceived. And I think the staff does a terrific job, and just want to help them out in that aspect.
Very good. Good points. I think we can work on those. Anything from anyone else? We could stay an hour, and then we'd have the right to, never mind, okay, I think we're adjourned. we're adjourned.